Good morning and welcome to the February 6, 2020 Business Meeting. And I'd also like to announce that one of our Commissioners, Fisher, is going to be hopping on a plane because she left her feathers at home and leaving early. So if you see her get up and leave, it's not because she doesn't agree with you. So I'd like the County Administrator, Mr. Gary Schmidt, to please take the role.
Yes, Chair. First, our staff support today: Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board; Stephen Madcor, County Council; a roll call Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Gary, what's up first?
First Commissioners, we have a presentation regarding hunger in our community and announcing results of the 2019 Health Housing and Human Services Food Drive. We have Rich Swift, the Director of Health Housing and Human Services, to present.
Morning. So today I'm speaking with you about our food drive, which we actually do every year. And this year is actually a bigger process and actually a bigger event for us because we were able to combine that with the county's annual picnic. And so one of the things I'd like to do is invite Kyle from the Oregon Food Bank, because I believe he is here today, or maybe he's not. So I won't invite him up, because he's a major partner with us in this event. And so this time around, we hit a high in terms of dollar amount and fiscal impact, which was 45,000 pounds of food this year. So we're a little late in terms of reporting back on this to the Board and letting you all know how we did, just because of other things and other work. You know, we do this event in August. We had a good time with the dunk tank. You know, I spent about, I think, 45 minutes in there and ended up being the high earner in terms of the dunk tank. So, you know, what we have in terms of food scarcity is an ongoing issue for the county and its residents. We do a, with Oregon Food Bank, every month at the clinics, we do a food event where we hand out food baskets. And at that event, we're doing now at this point, probably upwards of 200 families at each event. And this is escalating. So we run out of food every time we do this. So this will be an ongoing event for us. We'll do it every year in terms of combining with the county annual picnic and then also with our clinics. And we do see that this is an issue across the county. And at this point, I don't see, foreseeably, an end to it. But I do want to thank the county in terms of feeling such an immense amount of support in general from the county in terms of the H3S food drive. So I'll conclude my remarks.
As compared to last year?
You know, I don't know. Let's see what we did in terms of last year, if it's within the document, because I don't, I actually don't, do not have that memorized. I do believe we exceeded what we did from last year, because actually last year, we were not combined with the annual picnic.
All right. Well, I appreciate the work you do and folks who donate and contribute to the food supply. And thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It's appreciated.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda is Citizen Communications. We're going to start with Jim Myers and Diana Worthing. Worthing can come up also. You've got three minutes. We're usually a little more flexible, but this is quite a number of cards. There's a lot of yellow shirts out here.
Orange.
I know. I'm just pretending. I am semi-colorblind, but I can tell.
I was going to say, Jim, you're colorblind.
All right. Jim, go ahead.
Good morning Commissioners. A pleasure to be here. And I've missed the last several meetings, but I've caught them on the Internet. I want to personally thank you for agreeing to hold nightly meetings. Obviously, last week, you had many, many participants come in. Apparently, some people are down at Salem expressing their displeasure with proposed new taxes. But I just wanted to make a couple of points. There's been discussion of a new company coming into Estacada, which is exciting news regarding CLT. And there's been newspaper articles regarding CLT. My background for 45 years has been in that industry. And I'd like to make one point and make an invitation. The point is, CLT is one part of the entire picture. It really involves mass timber fabrication, which is glue-amb beams, solid timber, and cross-laminated timber. The story I want to tell you, and some of you may be familiar with this, the Clackamas Aquatic Center, south of, or west of, the Old Toys R Us. Has anybody gone in there and seen that roof structure?
In there on a monthly basis.
On a monthly basis? Take a look up. That's all made with Tuba 12, southern yellow pine, which came from the southeast U.S. by rail to Santa Rosa, California, was fabricated at standard structures, and trucked up here with special permits. Now, that, I supplied the material, so I'm intimately familiar with that. The question that I asked at the time, here we are looking out the windows with all this Douglas fir, why can't we get sustainable timber to manufacture these beams right here? And that's something as the county is moving forward and considering measures and groups that come in, I'd like you to consider the use of sustainable timber here in Clackamas County, as well as the state of Oregon, for this production. The other story I want to tell, and I'll make it very brief, I think Martha is familiar with it, but at one time, Clackamas County had the largest pine unfinished furniture manufacturer in the world, right here in Clackamas County. And it was my job to supply them with raw material to make that bedroom furniture. So we would bring in 40 containers a month to Clackamas, and they would manufacture this furniture. Well, they since sold the company and the new owners because, what I was told, tax reasons, moved it out of state. So as you're making legislation or you're moving forward, please consider the tax implications.
What's the name of that company?
MACO. M-A-C-O. MACO Wood Products.
I remember.
Yeah. Martha remembers.
All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Diana.
Good morning. I'm Diana Worthing, and I'm a Board Member and President of Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. As you're aware, the MOUs between Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and three of our volunteer organizations, our volunteer search and rescue organizations in Clackamas County are coming up onto your consent agenda, it sounds like, next week. And I want to say that we understand that the settlement of the Jenkins lawsuit regarding a Mount Hood climber who died following delays in dispatching helicopter support necessitated the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, making changes to ensure that the Sheriff's Office can verify that they have trained SAR volunteers on missions. And we agree that this is important. To that end, we look forward to establishing an MOU that formalizes our longstanding relationship with CCSO. And we understand, and we also agree, that the county must minimize its risk related to SAR operations. And we've worked diligently with the CCSO and with the County Council alongside our peer organizations, some of whom are here today, to develop an MOU that provides the CCSO the control they need over our trainings, our mission response, and our members' behavior there by reducing risk to the CCSO and the county. We've signed this MOU, you'll see, because it does cover our volunteers as provided by the state statute. There are a few issues that we see remaining for the county that Commissioner Savis highlighted for you at your meeting on Tuesday. Our goal has been and remains twofold. One, to provide the residents and visitors of Clackamas County, as well as those in our neighboring regions, with highly trained professional search and rescue services. And two, to minimize liability to the county. And we believe that the county's goals are the same. Looking forward to the future beyond these MOUs, CCSO told us from the very beginning that they intend these MOUs to be interim measures, an interim measure. And we are aware that CCSO is actively working toward developing an entirely new SAR team from scratch with significantly reduced volunteer numbers and eliminating the use of our existing high-performing SAR units that have been providing Clackamas County and our neighbors exemplary SAR services for decades. PNW SAR's culture of inclusion and technical excellence that we have carefully developed over our history is integral to the high level of service we are able to provide, and it simply cannot be replicated by the wholesale creation of a new team made up of disparate volunteers and overseen by personnel who are inexperienced in managing volunteers. This is still true even when attempting to cobble together the various pieces of previously functioning teams. This plan places the county in a position of greater liability, not to mention significant expense. We currently, all of the volunteer SAR organizations in Clackamas County currently provide all of our services for free to the county. We're self-funded. Our members provide their own equipment. Our organizations, excuse me, fundraise for our team's rescue equipment, and all of that comes to the county. And our people need outdoors for free. Today, I want to ask the county and CCSO to be open to alternative future models to minimize the cost and liability to the county while maintaining the highly trained professional volunteer SAR services that we currently provide to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jerry King and Scott Ransmeyer. Oh, excuse me. Question, Paul.
Yeah, I just wanted us to make a comment upfront. I think that, as we learned in the office just about 20 minutes ago, that, I think, a number of us were assuming that the agreements, the MOUs, would be on the agenda today and will be on the agenda next week. But we were, Jim and I, the Chair and I, were talking in the lobby. This might still, is probably a great opportunity, actually, to hear from you all. So I would encourage, you know, I don't want anyone to be discouraged that the MOUs are not on the agenda today. Actually, it might be a small blessing that maybe they're not, and give us time to revisit it. So just wanted to make that comment. We were, I think, thought it would be on the agenda today, but...
And I'd appreciate any specifics on the current agreement that we're going to be considering next week specifically. And I just heard the future concerns, and we might want to get in a little more detail on that. We've got all these people here. Somebody's got to cover that. So go ahead.
Yeah, I think we have some Board Directors that are going to speak next, and they'll get more into that. Thank you very much, Commissioners. I really appreciate the opportunity. My name is Jerry King, and I'm a member of Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue, and appreciate your valuable time to take a few comments regarding the memorandum of understanding that you're being presented between the County Sheriff and several local search and rescue organizations. First, just a minute about me and my history and why I have a strong opinion on this matter. I'm a lifelong resident of the area. In fact, my father was born 105 years ago in a farmhouse where your jail sits, 900 feet away. That's where he was born. And one of your better-known former Commissioners, Bob Schumacher, Bob Schumacher, who was my boy scout master, he taught me semaphore. He taught me what nuclear disarmament means in semaphore, the peace symbol. I tell you this to say, I'm here to stay, and I'm not going anywhere. I have over 210 search missions under my belt, and I hope to have another 210 going forward. Enough about me. Now, it's about you and the taxpayers of Clackamas County. You have been getting the best bargain known to local government. For 27 years, my team, Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue, has been providing 24/7, 365 days a year, free search and rescue services, absolutely free. Free vehicles, ones out in the parking lot, free equipment, free gasoline, free labor. You call us at 2:12 a.m., like you did two days ago, and you'll have 19 people hiking through the snow in just over an hour. That was the lady upon Welch's out of Lolo Pass. The further changes we hear being proposed, and this is really where it's going, it's the further changes. The MOU, we pretty much are in agreement with, with a few exceptions. Beyond this interim MOU, although details never seem to be clear, appear to take much of this cost onto the backs of the taxpayers. I've worked side by side with a dozen of your great deputies, and they are wonderful. They are very supportive. And I have heard nothing but praise and thanks for the services we provide. I personally would be shocked if you could find one rank-and-file deputy who truly believes these changes would be wise, that these changes are necessary. Please don't fix that which is not broken, and I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
All right. May have some later. You know, our doors are always open.
I appreciate that very much.
So I'd be happy...
And I, Mrs. Fisher, have to leave at 11:20. So if I walk out, it's not for any other reason.
But in the future, you know, our doors are always open. Be happy to meet with the group or individuals, and I'm sure all of us would do the same.
Yeah, I just want to add that when I asked for the work session, I was hoping to have adequate time to, you know, an opportunity to have that primed up, but we did not. We just only had under issues, and there was not enough opportunity to really bring out some of the concerns that I've heard, and you have the opportunity for these folks to speak. So they can't speak under Tuesday work sessions, but they can speak here on Thursday Business Meeting. So I appreciate you coming and sharing.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to yield my time. I'm sure there are folks on the Board who would like to have an opportunity to speak, and if I have a chance to come back later in the meeting. I'm a prospect trainee with the organization. I think there are folks who can speak much better to the issue today than I. So I'd like to yield at this time.
Thanks. So next, we have Mitchell Welch and Russ Lawrence. Thank you for coming today.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. My name's Mitchell Welch. I'm a member of the Board of Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue. And I came today to, as obviously, to express my concerns about what's happening with the CCSO and search and rescue in Clackamas County, and the future of search and rescue in Clackamas There's a stated goal from the Sheriff's Department to reduce risk to the county, and we and PNW completely agree with that. We are not against the Sheriff's Department. We're actually with the Sheriff's Department with this. We're actively moving forward to reduce risk. Now, with the MOU that you guys have taken up, Commissioner Savis brought up an issue with Section 4 about out-of-county callouts and the risk that goes to that. Part of what is true about that is when we are called out of county, from the moment the callout comes, from the time I leave my house till the time I get back to my house after a callout, currently under the state statutes, the requesting agency is responsible for me. They're the ones who take that risk. So if I'm called to Tillamook or if I'm called to Grant County, from the time I leave my house to the time I get back, they take that risk currently. The way the MOU has been written changes that to that, to every callout that I go on, Clackamas County now takes that risk on. So it doesn't make sense to, that it would reduce risk to take that risk on you for every callout. Understanding that, and I'll talk about some of our numbers here in a second. One of the other things that was brought up last Tuesday was that the need for control over the missions out there and sending a deputy to a mission and having them make the decision whether we go in the field or not, because of that control puts that deputy in a position of risk, because he's the one deciding whether we go in or not, not the requesting agency. That risk would fall on the county for every mission. I know my time is short, so I'll get into a little bit of numbers. We've spent 26 years honing our craft. We know, we're known in the region as a go-to search and rescue organization. We're good at what we do. We know what we're doing. In 26 years, there has not been an incident involving PNWSAR that I know of. Last year, in 2019, we responded 85 callouts, amounting to 7,870 mission hours. We saved 28 lives. We respond at any hour, like Jerry said. We train a lot to be as professional as we are. We trained for, last year, 2019, for 7,890 hours. Now, why does, what is this important to you? Well, it's universally agreed upon that the value of a volunteer is between $15 and $20. PNWSAR, at the lower rate, gave value to Clackamas County last year alone of $236,000. For us to field a team and, to put a team in the field, we have and maintain over $187,000 worth of gear. So, and I'll end with this, very quickly.
Please feel free.
Three questions. If you're going to start over, as the Sheriff said, how does that reduce risk to the county? Who will pay for starting over? And more importantly, and the question that keeps getting lost in all of this, is how does any of this help save lives? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name's Russ Lawrence. I'm with Mountain Wave Search and Rescue. I've been with them since 2015. I'm just about to complete my fifth year working with them. I have two issues I'd like to bring to your attention, both of which have been touched on by this gentleman next to me. One is, I'm glad and I can understand why the Sheriff would be interested in having one of his deputies attend out-of-county calls. However, my observation in over 100 missions that I've been on is that out-of-county deputies, out of our county, are about as welcome as out-of-county deputies coming into Clackamas County. The Clackamas County Search and Rescue Group has a team. They know what each other are going to do, and they're very familiar with their characteristics. So an out-of-towner is going to come in and advise them? I hardly think that that's going to be an effective means of getting the job done. As you all know, search and rescue, more often than not, is a life and death situation. We don't need needless oversight. The second issue that I would like to bring to your attention and discuss very briefly is that of dispatching. I recently went on a call in an adjoining county where Clackamas County was asked to provide a resource, said that the resource was not available. Unfortunately, we provide that resource also. We're not the only ones. But we were never consulted on bringing that resource forward. So y'all caught the dickens from a court case that basically boiled down to a dispatch issue. And here we are in the same situation of poor dispatch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Richard Hall. Callie, looks like, Kelly. We'll just go with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you letting me talk. Coincidentally, I have my mentor here who guided me through. I just finished my first year of Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue with Callie's assistance. I don't live in Clackamas County. I live in Multnomah County, who also has a search and rescue. But when I was out looking and did my research, I came to Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue because of their history, because of their training, because of the dedication that they have. I was warned from day one, this is a time commitment. We train, we train, we train. And they weren't kidding. After a year of not just the monthly trainings that we have in the field, we also have another weekly training in the classroom, an additional training for prospects that I went through. I want to also mention that, safety first, and that's one of the things that we learned when we come out there before anything. We, when our selection day, we got to the edge of a cliff, and it was Mitch that asked, what do we do here? And everybody was afraid not to figure out a way as a prospect, how to get this subject down this deep cliff with these brambles and things like that. The right answer was, we don't. We take care of our team first, and because we don't want to create additional issues, safety has always been the number one thing, and that's based on a lot of experience. I want to talk about briefly working out of county. In this last year, in, I had the privilege, two things. One, a pack-out that took every single member of our team assisting another team in Skamania County, a person with a broken ankle. We started at maybe 6 o'clock, got home about 3 o'clock in the morning. That person probably still be up there without our team assisting another county. I'll tell you what, that was brutal, very difficult, but I was privileged to be on there. Secondly, about two weeks later, I had the privilege of being on a team that went out and worked seamlessly with some of the other counties here to bring out a 75-year-old mushroom picker. It was her birthday that day. I heard the call. It had been several days, and I thought if I don't get out there today, it's going to be a recovery, if it's not already. Had our team not been out there to assist, because it was a member of our team that spotted somebody out there, made a call, we got within earshot and brought her out seamlessly and saved her life instead of recovery, and that was because we were able to assist another county, that's bigger than anything out there. 20 seconds left. I just want to bring up that there was a recent outside article about other states that are struggling to keep search and rescue within their budgets now, as people are coming to the outdoors. Oregon now has been targeted at of this growth, a wave of all these people that want to come here and hike and snowshoe and do all these kinds of things. We're already at capacity, and I want you to think, do you want to go down that rabbit hole of stretching your resources? Now, once you go there and say, we want to fund this, and it triples or quadruples in size, do you want to have to go back to the taxpayers every year and try and fight when we can just take on new members for free? So thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, good morning. I want to thank you for hearing the comments and concerns of my teammates and I, as you consider the future of SAR in Clackamas County. And it's a pleasure coming after my mentee. He's wonderful. This is my fourth year as a volunteer with Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue. I joined search and rescue after a friend and mentor of mine was the subject of a four-day search in the Sierra Nevada Mountains. That search ended with his body being recovered and returned to his family. So I know what it's like to be on the other end of a search, and that's why my priority is and always will be to provide excellent search and rescue services to the residents and visitors of Clackamas County and the surrounding areas, because the people who are lost and in danger deserve the absolute best we can give them. Like Rich brought up, I'm also not a resident of Clackamas County, and so many of our team members are not. And like he pointed out, this county is attracting and retaining rock star search and rescue personnel. And that's because of the quality of our current organizations. I believe that the reason my team, PNWSAR, is so effective as an organization is because of the on-the-ground experience of our leadership and our members. Our current Board of Directors has attended over 880 missions, and our current Training Committee has attended over 1,400. We know what it takes to make a SAR team tick, and it's not just people showing up and looking around in the woods. It's thousands and thousands of hours of trainings and meetings and bookkeeping and dinners after really, really hard missions. Our organization currently provides all of these services to the county with no charge while maintaining a vibrant and positive community that keeps our members grounded and motivated. and motivated to continue this difficult work. So I'd like to finish by asking you today to recognize the outstanding quality of service that is provided by PNWSAR and our sister teams, and the monumental effort that our membership puts into achieving this level of excellence. I urge us all to continue to work towards an agreement such as a revision of the current MOU that will satisfy liability and procedural concerns while not interrupting, jeopardizing, or dismantling an excellent search and rescue system that we already have in place. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Marcel Rodriguez and Chris Nelson.
You're very lucky. Usually to get this many of us together in one place, you have to be lost. So I'm a board member of Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue, 10-year member. You've heard from many of my colleagues this morning, you'll hear from others, and I hope that the theme that you take away from this discussion is one of selfless service to those people in the county and in the state that require our services in our time of need, in their time of need. One of the things, as we talk about this out-of-county issue, one thing I think that's really important to understand is just from how frequently that happens. In our last 10 years of service, for which we have pretty substantial records, we went through and calculated that 48% of our missions are out-of-county. That's a, a lot of liability to be taking on if you don't need to. You know, if you look at, at what we do, we answer the call when your family member's missing in the woods, I think most people recognize that. But we also look for your missing child in the city. We look for your elderly relative with memory issues that walks away from their care facility. We search for evidence of the violent crime that was perpetrated against you or your family or someone you love. We also tend with the unfortunate souls that don't survive their encounters in the, in the outdoors. We do this happily, we do this openly, and we do it without expectation of compensation. We're not looking for anything more than the opportunity to continue that service as a team and we, and to the residents and the visitors of the county. We believe that the current MOU protects the concerns of the county and allows us to continue as a team, and that further reorganizations or dissolution of teams is not necessary to meet that goal, and in fact, puts you at a point where you actually have more liability than you have now. I think as it was stated by Jerry, you've got the greatest deal that you could possibly get, not only in terms of a financial perspective, but also in terms of the quality of service that you receive. If you go around the state, if you go to other states, you realize that when, when Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue, Portland Mountain Rescue, Mountain Wave Search and Rescue show up, they're, everybody breathes a little bit easier, just because they know that, that those, the capabilities and the capacity that we can bring to a mission, especially to some of the smaller counties that we serve, is a pretty profound thing. And we just would like to be able to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Chris Nelson, resident of Sandy and board member of Mountain Wave Search and Rescue, which I've been with for about eight years. Mountain Wave has served Clackamas County for over 27 years. You know, we don't have an issue with an MOU that protects the county from liability, but our issue kind of falls the same with PNW, which is the out-of-county responses. Currently, the teams have signed the MOU, and I believe the sheriff has signed the MOU. So therefore, it's already kind of been in place, it's already kind of been used. And in that instance, to kind of go on what Mr. Lawrence is saying with Mountain Wave, is that they have controlled that out-of-county response already. That's a huge liability and a risk to Clackamas County. And the reason I say that is on his story of a resource that was available but wasn't asked for because Clackamas chose to, losing my words here, they, they chose to decide how they were gonna dispatch that call, or who they were gonna choose to, to speak to of, of that resource. So I, I look at what Clackamas County has had over the years, the free service that they've had from these teams, and the money that they have saved. And I think also, it's, it's a good pat on the back for Clackamas County to have these resources under their belt and be able to provide them to these other counties, because what Mountain Wave's against is the dissolving of the teams and making one team through Clackamas County only. Because you take that resource not only away from the residents that live here and recreate here, but you take it away from a big portion of the state, and even Washington State and California, some places that we've been. So as you guys look at this and listen to testimony and stuff, I just ask that you look at the big picture and kind of the after, the afterwards that's happening. And the money really is, is a huge thing to the taxpayers, because to replace what these groups have given you would cost a lot of money. And I think there's a lot of things that haven't even come up here, you know, there's equipment and stuff, radio equipment, stuff that Mountain Wave does that's in place, sitting in places on the mountain, that all that would have to be replaced. And that's a lot of money on the taxpayers, and it's a lot of resources to fulfill. So I thank you for listening to all of us and, and looking into this further, and thank you for your time.
And thank you, appreciate it. Next we have Bill Stephens and Lindsey. And Lindsey.
Again, thank you for your time. I'm Bill Stephens, I am the lead medical officer for Mountain Wave Search and Rescue. I've been a paramedic for 20 years, I've been in emergency services for approximately 26 years. I just want to also point out, thank you for everything you've guys done. I've been a resident for Clackamas for 15 years and been in this area for over 40. Sadly, as being in emergency services, as you know, seconds count, and so any delay in that costs lives. And sadly, most of these people are here because of situations in our past that have caused unfortunate outcomes, starting with the formation of this SAR Council. The SAR Council has been a model for the state and if not the nation now. Each team you see here represents a specific specialty and dedication. We're all trained in the same level, but we focus on different areas. We have our own niches, and we cover that. There's approximately over 300 SAR volunteers in the county or between these three organizations. And that's a, a lot of expertise in those specific areas. To cross-train for everything would be almost next to impossible unless you paid a full-time search and rescue staff, like a fire department. So what I want to point out is, time matters, and a delay in that, and having to go through several different steps, that's been the problem in the past, such as the KIM search and that kind of stuff. So I want to point out that any time that you have to delay and go through more bureaucracy and further paperwork, delays a further outcome. So, I just want to point that out, it's my observation, and I think there could be some changes in the skills. And again, at 2:00 in the morning, you call somebody and point that you want them to climb over the tallest point of Mount Hood, or I mean, the tallest point of the state of Oregon, none of these people will look back and they will all follow and go and look for somebody, dead or alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Morning, my name is Lindsey Kipers, and I'm a member of the Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue Team. I'm here because I care about search and rescue in Clackamas County. Thank you for the work that you do, particularly your careful consideration of changes to this very important service my team provides to our community. I join the Pacific Northwest Search and Rescue Team to serve my community. I take immense pride in knowing my team will provide high-quality search and rescue services 24/7, 365 days a year. The level of professionalism my team demonstrates on each and every mission is incredible, and is evidenced by the numerous letters and notes that we receive from subjects and community members. We seamlessly partner with our local SAR teams in, in missions and on searches to get the job done, and appreciate the expertise each team offers. The quality of training provided to ensure this level of professionalism is inspiring and requires many thoughtful hours of planning by our Training Committee. The dedication of this team to serve the residents and visitors of Clackamas County and surrounding communities is not easily replicated, and the willingness we have to rearrange our personal and professional lives for search and rescue happens because of the team culture and support we've created and sustained over the last 27 years. We understand the MOU, not before you today, but that's been discussed, is intended to be temporary. The Sheriff's Office has indicated their preference to directly run single, one single search and rescue team. We believe this would increase the risk and cost to CCSO. By collapsing multiple teams into one, CCSO risks the county losing several hundred trained, engaged, professional volunteers. That increases the county's liability because it could lose the ability to provide effective search and rescue services, putting community members and visitors to our wilderness and areas at risk. Currently, PNWSAR operates in partnership with but independent of CCSO. CCSO's proposal to directly run search and rescue operations increases their corporate liability. Finally, what CCSO is proposing creates new liability by passing expenses that the volunteer organizations have historically covered onto taxpayers. Expenses include both time spent administering the volunteer organization and rescue equipment necessary for SAR missions and trainings. As a team, we ask the county and Sheriff's Office to partner with us. We ask for openness to exploring alternative future search and rescue models that both minimizes the cost and liability to the county and preserves the highly-trained professional volunteer search and rescue services our team provides to the community. Thank you, Commissioners, for your careful consideration of any changes to search and rescue operations in Clackamas County.
Thank you. I want, since this is the last couple that are speaking on this matter, I want to thank you for all you do and the lives you've saved, and I can't imagine the calculation of money you've saved the county. If we asked Gary, "Gary, will you take care of paying for this?", he, he would probably quit. But, thank you for all you do. But I have a couple questions of our county council. One thing is that we, we, it was almost a courtesy to let us sign this agreement, correct?
One more time, Chair, I'm sorry.
Well, we don't have, the sheriff didn't have to present it to us for, to make this move, this action.
I disagree, I recommended that, I, I think the board has to sign it. You are assuming-
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Yes, you are assuming additional risk.
Okay. I didn't know that. So that, that's important. But, it'd be great if someone could write up a summary. I mean, I, I agree with the many things you've said. I didn't know there were so many rescue groups around. I remember back in 2000, I'm gonna bring up the history, 2009 or '10, when I suggested that we require people climbing Mount Hood to carry locators, there was a lot of pushback from folks in the search and rescue community. And I'd like to talk about that when we meet too. So, just, thank you very much for all you do, and, and we can't thank you enough. And I don't want to see this group being negatively impacted by any future changes, but there is something important that I think needs to be considered. A lot of this is state law, correct?
Not necessarily, no.
Some of it is?
Some is. Yes.
Okay.
It's driven by state law.
Yeah. And so the legislature will have an impact on, on future agreements, would you say?
I'm not aware of any legislative changes in, in the pipeline, but-
There could be.
There certainly could be, absolutely.
Yeah, well, I too want to thank everyone for showing up here today, and I, I'm sure that there's, there's far more to this than, than these folks probably have the, the liberty to actually talk about to some degree. I think they're being candid. I think that, as Callie was speaking, and Marcel and some others were speaking, the, what came to mind to me is, it's not just about a person, whether they're hired by the county or they're a volunteer, that's out there working in this line of work. I think it's more about the passion these people all have, their commitment, their training, their dedication. The fact that they're doing it for free demonstrates really that unselfish, unselfishness to, to provide that service. And, and I remember November or Thanksgiving and Christmas here, you know, the meeting before those times, thinking about these people out there in those times when it's snowing out there, or sometimes at that, while we're having our Thanksgiving dinner or our Christmas dinner, sometimes often these folks are out there rescuing people on our behalf. And I, at the bottom, the bottom line of all this, the bottom line is that they, they, we ought to be thankful for the lives we're saving. It's not, sure, there is a money element to this, there's absolutely a risk element to this. The risk can be avoided, it's our duty to look hard at, at, at the procedures they're, they're in and how we, how we implement it. 404, Section 404, the ORS, this is not, how we set the model can be done, is done in other counties where it's as described, they can, they can abide by that. We don't have to use this model, and that's what I was trying to point out Tuesday, is that there are different models at work, and you got to remember, they're part of a, this, Region 2 is a nine-county organization, or they serve nine counties. And they got, they got that notoriety, they got that designation because of the good work that they've done. So I, I think we really need to dig into this deeper, frankly. I think there's some recognition of that here today. I think the, it's not necessary, the law doesn't say that we need to take the risk for other counties. The law doesn't say that these folks may or not, may not be the best quali, they may be the best qualified, but they, they may or may not be the one who people are dispatched. And in the, in the models they're using in other counties, they, they call the people they want to call. Currently, they don't have that ability any longer to call these people directly, other counties, other sheriffs, to call these people directly. So, I, I tried to lay that out on Tuesday, and hopefully we'll get some more discussion around that. I, I applaud the Sheriff's Office for all the good work, I applaud these people for all the good work, and they're, they have great relationships with, with the Sheriff's deputies. And we have Sheriff's deputies that are side-by-side, that are also members of search and rescue, that do this on a volunteer basis as well, or on a paid basis. So, I do want to thank all of you for your dedication and bringing this to our attention. And the bottom line is, we're, we all, it's about our constituents, about the lives we save. And if my family or a friend of mine is stuck on the mountain, I want the best people out there, and I want them out there as fast as I can. And I think that we, we need to recognize, we need to recognize that, we need to streamline this as the best way possible to where we're actually benefiting the people we serve. Thank you.
Okay, Martha?
Yeah, I also want to thank all of you. I don't think people realize, in some areas of the county, that Mount Hood, the mountain makes its own weather, and it's a very dangerous mountain. And I was here when, when all those young people-
The church.
-were lost from Oregon Episcopal School, I think it was 80-
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. And that was a wake-up call, and so I want to thank you for putting your own lives at risk for this. But I have a question of Mr. Madcor. So, our sheriff is his own elected official, so-
That's correct.
So I am really trying to understand what auspice we have over this in terms of how these changes are being made. I mean, we, we have to sign off because it's a county risk, is that correct?
That is correct. The sheriff does have independent statutory authority to be the lead for search and rescue operations within the county. This MOU contemplates search and rescue volunteers and the Sheriff's Office going out-of-county, like a mutual aid agreement. If we were to go to Portland, if we were to go to Washington County, we have similar types of arrangements. That is a risk which only this board can assume.
Okay. Thank you for that.
If you were to eliminate out-of-county, out-of-state operations by the Sheriff's Office and his control and direction over search and rescue volunteers, arguably, it could be just an MOU the sheriff could sign on his own.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that clarification.
And I just want to just clarify, I'll say it again, I said it on Tuesday, I want to say it again, there is no effort of anyone to overstep any authority that the sheriff is given by the Oregon State Statute, as Mr. Madcor outlined. This is about the out-of-county element, and I want to make that perfectly clear, I'm making no effort, I totally respect the sheriff and the Sheriff's Department, this is not any overstep or effort to overstep that. It's about the liability for out-of, as Mr. Madcor said, on the out-of-county or out-of-state, as a matter of fact, risk that we do not need to incur.
Were you done, Martha?
I'm done, yeah.
Ken?
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate what I've heard here today and learned. One thing that I was not aware of in the discussions we had the other day, and that was that there apparently is an effort to create, to, to break up this organism, these three organizations and create a single organization, am I understanding that correctly? Okay? And that ultimately, that would, could also lead to the funding of said organization by Clackamas County. Clackamas County. Well, there's an expression, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." And I, I suspect that that's where we are with this. I've heard that the organizations that exist currently can live with the MOUs as are currently presented, from what I heard in testimony today, but that the real concern is the breaking up of their organizations and forming a single organization, plus the obvious financial burden that that could place on us. I don't know what that would mean on response times or any of the rest, I'm not an expert in this, but I will say this, I can't support the idea of funding something when we are sitting here with a budget shortfall as we speak. It's simply fiscally irresponsible on our part. So, I'll go on the record as, as personally saying, I, I don't see any way that we can finance something like that, nor that, nor that we should, because, as the saying goes, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." So, um, I do want to say thank you for the work you do. And again, it's not so much about the money, it is about the people. But sitting here, we also have to consider both factors. If we can live with the MOUs, that's okay. We can deal with that. But, um, going any further than that doesn't make sense to me, at least from what I've heard here today.
I've also heard that there's some concern about why are we taking on the responsibility of, uh, other, uh, other counties that, well, other places outside the county in this current MOU. That's the other concern. My, my favorite saying is, "Keep it simple, stupid."
Yeah.
I think you just, I just want to just, just add to that very thing you just said, and that is, I think they've all spoke to the fact that the, the risk on the out-of-county is the issue with the MOU. And, and if there's modifications made, that we're not absorbing that, or a model, but it has to be, actually, not just, it's not just what the MOU says, it's really about the model that's employed by, by CCSO. And in partnership with the other counties. So, you probably heard me say and ask the sheriff, or ask legal counsel on Tuesday, do we have MOUs that, from, with the other counties that either indemnify the county or cover the cost? And the answer is, there isn't any. And so, um, you know, I think, once you know what the model is, or once we, you know, once we all, everyone, I don't know if we are even involved, again, this is the sheriffs of each county that are involved, it's not really our call. But it should be, um, it should be in the best interest of the people out there to be served, um, and, um, it ought to be a mutual agreement between all the counties. And if we're gonna sign a document that puts us, it acknowledges a model that may not work, or, or adds cost to the county, that's where I think Section Four comes out as an issue that these people have pointed out here today.
All right. I think we need to talk a little bit more about this, maybe in executive session next Tuesday. Okay?
Thanks to all, thanks again to all for y'all coming today.
I got two more people if you want to wait, or you need to leave. Go, uh, you're welcome to all go, just if you like. Yeah, okay, shall, we do that? Let's take a short break. And thank you for coming today. So, five minutes.
Let Kyle get up here. All right, Brainerd, you're up first.
Sorry, am I, oh, sorry.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Brainerd Brower from Redland, Redland, Oregon, I'm from the community here east of us. I shouldn't need to come here, I came here today inquiring about when we would get our two $5,000 radar feedback signs. I did meet a few months ago a professional engineer from the county, walking the site along with two consulting professional engineers, along with our county electrician, looking at where to place these signs. So, I presume it's in the pipeline. I wish it could be more timely and more cost-effective. And they are vital for our improved evolution of road safety in Redland. I have to say, after listening to what I've just listened to, that I'm even more sick to my stomach, probably have pretty firmly lost my appetite for lunch. You all are elected by us as representatives, you are not bureaucrats. The sheriff's not a bureaucrat. I mean, you allow someone like myself to come and talk to you. I can't thank you enough. Sheriff, I have never been able to get through to. I've had zero ability to even get a, any communication. So, that may be an issue in what we just heard. And I know nothing about search and rescue, other than the positive things I've heard on the news. But I see one core topic. The people that work in the county, a lot of them very diligent, very well-meaning, and some of them self-aspiring, especially when there's a concentration of power and influence without accountability, you're our accountability, the best we have at the moment. I would encourage a broader decision-making authority in certain positions in the county and in hierarchy. It may not be as easy to implement as one might say, but, but you're our place. And to bring in balance the bureaucracy, and it seems like even search and rescue, let alone my own situation, we just don't have that cooperative dialogue. Um, yeah, we shouldn't break something that's not broken, but we get insurance companies involved and people accusing liability, and somebody in authority wanting to have control and believe that it's better if they had control and could coordinate it, and then teams get broken up and communities get broken up. I mean, Redland alone, as a rural community, let alone other communities, we're, I mean, our roads could become the next freeway coming through here, because nobody can build a freeway between Mount Hood and, or, and Portland. But yet, we should preserve our own community, let alone something like this. So, it does take a very difficult level of guts to step out of the box. And sometimes I doubt that's comfortable, and I, I don't envy your position in that. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, gonna pick up right from there, I do not envy, um, the situation, it's sitting here watching, uh, do not envy the situation of, of you commissioners, uh, by any means. It's a very difficult conversation we just witnessed, and, and in the same right, I'm glad that I got to witness it as a community member, uh, because I, I took away from it, I, I was very proud and, and watched this dialogue and conversation happen. And if they were still here, I wanted to thank the search and rescue, as being a volunteer coordinator myself for about four years at the Oregon Food Bank, appreciate what they do, it's really wonderful. So, and then to watch you guys adapt and, and actually have like, what I saw as a conversation, I've been to many, many county, county commissioner meetings, and that, it was very cool to see. So, I'm very glad I got to witness that. I'm also glad, although I have to apologize to Rich in the back of the room, because I made him come up here and call me, and I was downstairs, um, because I get to be the last person and leave you on a very positive note. Um, I, my name is Kyle Hummel, I work at the Oregon Food Bank. I presented last year after the county's food drive. It is something that's been going on for many years, well before my time at the food bank. But I have been there about eight years. I have personal connection to, uh, to food insecurity and hunger, and it's why I'm very passionate about what I do, which hopefully you felt last year and you're feeling again this year. And if you see me out in the community, you're gonna find, um, I bring it everywhere I go, because I was five years old when I came through foster care, and the first tangible memory I want to have of, of my first birthday was when I was five, and my foster mom and I went to our local pantry, and I got a cake that my foster family thought they could make fun of me for, because it said "Happy Birthday Allison" on it. And, um, I'm obviously not Allison. And I went home, and I'll never forget them trying to give me a bad time, and me pushing right back, being like, "Forget you, I have a cake, you don't." Like, "This is my birthday, I'll, I'll be Allison if I get a cake." So, um, and then the second time I experienced food insecurity was when I was in college. Um, and both times, the, the Food Network has stepped up to help and support me, um, and, and helped me. So, credit to it there, but then also credit to what Clackamas County has done. A couple shout-outs specifically to Jamie Stark, Rich Swift, Marco, I don't want to butcher his last name, but I'm going to, and, and Nicio, phenomenal partners for us, for me specifically, so a quick shout-out to them. All of H3S in the county really stepped up this year specifically, and, excuse me, the A-Team as well, by hosting it at this year's county picnic. We, uh, had a, a little food drive activity around that this year for the first time, which was pretty unique. So, a lot of cool things were done this year, a lot of very cool county, uh, participation with the baskets, with the carts, with everything. So, just wanted to thank you and, uh, thank the whole county, really, and let you know, this only happens because of the five members of this board, and in my opinion, because of Rich and his office leading this through H3S, that causes this wave to happen, and we're hoping to be able to continue to grow that, work with you all, because at the food bank, we view food in two, two very indelible facts. It is a basic human right to have good food, and we have a place of abundance. We're not coming from scarcity, we have the food, we have the product, we need to get it to the people. And through the food drive that we fed over 30,000 people because of the funds raised, all in Clackamas and Multnomah County, that's a huge step into it. The Blueprints Grant, which we get from Clackamas County as well, that's another 55,000 people we can feed because of that. And then lastly, with the census grant that we just got recently, that's gonna be a huge bit of work we can now do here over the next six months on the census. So, thank you for being who you are, letting us be who we are, and partnering with us in the community, we aren't who we are without you. So, thank you. And thank you to H3S and Rich back there.
Martha?
Yeah, I, I also want to thank you, you know, I grew up in an Italian-American family where food was paramount.
Yes.
In fact, and No-No always sat last, 'cause she was making the food for everybody. But I wanted to mention that we probably have the largest number of farmers' markets in the state of Oregon. And they're wonderful places to get fresh food. I know that our one here in Oregon City accepts, um, you know
The double up.
You know, you can do it, and I, I have a, I have a show, thanks to the county, called Cooking with the Commissioner, where I basically go to the farmers' markets and get produce, get meat, whatever. And, um, the first two were Italian dinners, but the third one, um, I'm gonna be working with WIC.
Yes.
And, um, I took a look yesterday at some of the foods that they suggest for nourishing people, and I think the next one's going to be a, a really beautiful Italian lentil soup that's going to be very frugal to make, but it's one of the most delicious things you can have. So, I'm really interested in food security and how we get those fresh, that pipeline of fresh food. And I, I think, I was gonna ask Gary, I think we also have a free fresh food market for, that H3S puts on. I guess Rich would know about that as well, where people can go get fresh vegetables and fruit. Because, and the other thing that's happening is our extension service is going to be putting a new building here with a teaching kitchen.
Wow.
And it's next to Clackamas Women's Services. So, they've come up with a mutual agreement where basically, um, they're going to hopefully do nutrition classes, um, actually getting people in there, teaching them how to do, you know, nutritious meals, how to do it frugally. So, it's been a real nice kind of progression. But thank you for bringing this up, because people, people don't know sometimes, that there's a lot of hungry people out there.
And this county does step up to address that as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
And my, my wife would be very, would love to hear that. Her last name, we didn't change it when we got married, is D'Nicolantonio, it's 19 letters, so, second-generation Italian immigrant, so.
Okay. Oh, God, you gotta love it, you know?
So, and that was actually, um, if we can assist at all with the, with the Cooking with the Commissioner, if you would like to do a food bank lend, the kind of one where we can get stuff that we could provide, things like that.
Oh, that would be fantastic.
Very fun and also wonderful to work with you on.
Yeah, and I've got to check with my administrator, 'cause he, he says, we don't want to, you know, it's, we can't cost too much money, but I, I think it's a real public service, not only for food security, but for public health.
Thank you.
And for allowing people to get access to decent food. So, I'll take you up on that. And thank you for the note, because sometimes we don't get this very often.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, you know, having been fortunate enough never to have to go to a food bank, I still can say that I remember Top Ramen, and I remember it well at 10 cents a package, and it came in handy. But more importantly, just want to thank you for the, the volunteer work that you do. We have about 50 different citizen volunteer groups in Clackamas County. Quite frankly, we could not accomplish our mission as a county without those volunteer groups. It takes the resources that we have and stretches them a lot further. So, we do appreciate the work that you do, and, um, anything that we can do to help, don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you.
All right, I gotta say something, because Martha did.
Okay.
I gotta say something, because Martha did, and I should've said this while the mountain rescue people, thank you. The mountain rescue people, I've climbed Mount Hood five times, my favorite one was, uh, I always went with a, a, a mountain climbing group, was the leader of the group fell in a crevasse probably 50 feet out of the parking lot in Timberline Lodge, and we still followed this guy up the mountain. Paul.
Trust.
Well, you know, there's, there's nothing like, uh, having an experience, and it's like, uh, trying to tell people if you, you know, if, um, you have kids and you're trying to tell someone who hasn't had the opportunity, the privilege of having kids, what it's like to raise kids or whatnot. It, point-making here is that, being hungry, I grew up hungry. I remember every time, every day in class being, just starving and just waiting, and even though I barely had much of a lunch, I had to go home. And if I didn't have a job, um, I wouldn't be able to afford the lunch I'd actually bought after school, 'cause I was so hungry. So, um, uh, no, nothing more rewarding than knowing that these organizations are out there like this. And I was, uh, in the principal-for-a-day program with NC, um, the North Clackamas School District. Uh, I went to RAO, and they were, they had engaged a, uh, a nutrition program at the school where kids could walk in in the morning and have breakfast before school started. I mean, I was like, ah, it was like, so, it was awesome, because really, you know, that's, it's a challenge for, it's a challenge for a lot of people that don't have the, have the ability to actually afford lunch or breakfast or anything else, and yet, our kids in school and so forth that really need it, um, uh, you don't know what it's like growing up hungry until you actually did it yourself, you can't describe it to anyone. But, uh, your services are appreciated, it's great to see you again. And, uh, again, I appreciate all the volunteers, our staff, all the people who volunteer, the postal service, who does a, a great program as well.
Yep.
A number of people that actually care about other, so these food drives are just fantastic, so, um, keep up the good work.
Thank you. And again, thank you to you and, and Rich, H3S, it's all because of the leadership, it makes it all work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Brainerd. Uh, next up, we have some public hearings.
Yes, commissioners, I'll announce the two, the first two public hearings as they are related, although we'll do them one at a time. First is approval of board order for boundary change proposal CL 19-008, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number Two, Number One, sorry. The second public hearing is approval of a board order for a boundary change proposal CL 19-009, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Again, we'll do them one at a time. Ken Martin will lead both, he's our boundary change consultant.
Good morning, this is, uh, the first one is a, a small, single lot, uh, within the city of Happy Valley. The district has a line in the street adjacent to the property, and we'd recommend approval.
All right. Uh, any questions? We do quite a few of these, so, um, I'll open the public hearing and ask if Douglas would like to testify. Or anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Doug Elias, and I own the property on 152nd that's being annexed. Um, I really didn't come here prepared to speak, I don't know if, I really don't want to muck up this process with an issue that might not be, uh, but this is, this, I've kind of lost the story through the years, this was a lega, this was a legal matter that I was given annex to my property 18 years ago, but, uh, I've outlived departments and people along the way, and I feel like the story kind of got lost. I'm really not, didn't request this, this was, this was something that was, um, given to me by the county, uh, when I got close enough to the, um, to the sewer that's being put in and some development down the street, so, um, I
This is your property?
This is my property, yeah.
Can you support this?
Yes, I do.
Great.
That's what we need to know, yeah.
Hey, anyone else like to testify on this matter? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL 19-008, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Aye, excuse me, second.
Okay.
It's moved to second that we approve a board order for boundary change proposal CL 19-008, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Go ahead.
The, uh, second proposal is also a single lot, uh, it's, this is not in the city of Happy Valley, but the district does have a line in the street adjacent to the property that is able to serve it, and we'd recommend approval. street adjacent to the property, is able to serve it, and we'd recommend approval.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL-19-009, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we approve a board order for boundary change proposal CL-19-009, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't know why I'm hammering already. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. I always say that when you testify, you don't want to say too much, especially if we're probably going to approve it. But the next item is, Gary?
Next public hearing is first reading of an ordinance amending County Code Chapter 2.05 Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees and Declaring an Emergency. Andrew Naris, County Council's Office, will present.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Naris from the County Council's Office. We brought this before the board recently, it issues. The amendment is designed to delete certain provisions related to limited-term appointments from the county code. Those specific appointments are already covered in EPP, so this is a bit redundant. We are going to make a game change and leave one provision that refers to limited-term appointments in the designation section where it designates them as, as members of the unclassified service. So that's the only change, but if there is any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? All right. I'll enter, this is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
It is.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only and assign a number.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance number 02-2020, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code 2.05 Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees.
All right, doesn't look like we need to vote anymore. We just need to announce that the second reading will be Thursday, February 20th at 20:20 at the board's regular scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of agreement number 9574, an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Health Centers Division and Clackamas County Housing Authority for a housing development partnership. Approval of a revenue grant agreement with Oregon Department of Education Early Learning Division for Healthy Families, Oregon. Approval of a local grant agreement, amendment number one, with Northwest Family Services to provide evidence-based parenting education classes. Approval of a subrecipient agreement with the Mental Health and Addictions Association of Oregon for alcohol and drug recovery peer delivery services. H3S continued approval of a subrecipient agreement with the Mental Health and Addiction Association of Oregon for older adult peer support services. Under our Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the University of Oregon for AmeriCorps members. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro to implement the fiscal year 1920 annual waste reduction recycle-at-work program and commercially food scrap, food scraps collection requirements. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a contract with Baker &amp; Tyler LLC, Brooks and Digital Media purchasing and processing services. County Council, approval of an assignment of easement agreement with Fishers Forest Park Property Owners Association for Lot 27 Fishers Forest Park. Under Technology Services, approval of a service-level agreements between Clackamas County Broadband Exchange and the City of Canby. Under Water Environment Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the University of Washington to model project changes in participation extremes due to climate change. And approval of an assignment and easement agreement with Fishers Forest Park Property Owners Association for Lot 27 Fishers Forest Park. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is County Administrator's update.
Yes, Commissioners, I'd love to show you more good news of the great things we do here at Clackamas County. First, Clackamas County Dog Services has been using social media to bring the public a behind-the-scenes look at its shelter. Along the way, they've been successfully debunking rumors about the shelter, including a rumor that any dog entering stays permanently in a cage. Dog Services recently illustrated the journey of Clarissa, an American pit bull terrier, who was uncomfortable in the kennel environment. Clarissa was enrolled in the new dog foster program, which placed her in a temporary foster home until a suitable home could be found. After being highlighted as a dog of the week right here at one of our Commissioner meetings, Clarissa has now found her forever home. So thanks for Dog Services for their creative engagement and innovative ways of serving our furry friends and also letting the public know how our work is done. Next, the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District received a great kudos for the North Clackamas Aquatic Park and a family visiting the aquatic park from New Jersey. They wrote to us, "We are contacting you to tell you how much my family loved your aquatic park. We were visiting family in the area, and your water park was our favorite part of the trip. My son and daughter loved the water slides. I love seeing them have fun, and the memories that we made at your park are ones we'll remember for a long time. Yours truly, the Albany's family from New Jersey." So thank you to the Albany's family for sharing that, and to our staff at the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, the aquatic park. Finally, as you know, Commissioners, the first meeting of our county's new youth task force happened a few weekends ago here in Oregon City. The youth task force involves high schoolers who have committed their time to work on a video campaign to raise awareness of our school-based health centers. This topic was chosen because county research with the young people found that accessible health care was young people's top issues here in Clackamas County. The end result will be a video production by this youth task force aimed at educating their peers. Thank you to Public and Government Affairs for supporting this youth task force.
Is this the grant-funded group?
No, that's a separate group with Health, Housing and Human Services.
Okay.
That's my report, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First up is Martha.
Ooh, I have a lot here, so I'm going to go, try and go as fast as I can. I had a great visit with the Optimist Club this week, thanks to Brian Shaw and Claire Mett, and I talked about everything from housing to transportation. And then Brian asked me about my cooking show again, so I think it's.
Optimist Club?
The Optimist Club, yes. Of Oregon City, no. The Oregon City Optimist Club. Had coffee with Metro Councilor Christine Lewis, who updated me on T-2020, and the conversations here together has been having with Metro about getting wraparound services for homeless people. I also went to the 2020 Vision for Oregon City, and that was a talk given by Tony Conkle, who is the, the person who, he's their, he's their chief administrator, actually. I had a meeting with Jada from our Education Service District, where we talked about workforce and childcare and after-school programs. And I'm going to be continuing to touch bases with our, with our superintendents across the board. I did mention I'm kind of renewing my teaching certificate, so, just because I just thought it would be fun for me to do and, and to make sure that, again, I have more access to, again, working with young people one more time. So that's been kind of fun. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting our pollination initiative and the, the resolution that we did last week. So I'm here to remind people, right now, mason bees or blue orchard bees, it's time to order them. You can order them online with their nesting tubes. And people think, oh, you can wait until summertime. No, these are early, early bees. They emerge in late February and early March. It's time to get ready for that now and to take a look and see what flowers you have close by so they can get the nectar and pollen they need to reproduce. And they are some of our chief pollinators. They are actually some of the chief pollinators that we have just across the United States for cherries, apples, pears, plums, because they emerge earlier and they forage at lower temperatures than the non-native honeybees. So go online, folks, and they're stingless. I mean, they, they're, they're very gentle creatures, and you can get your bee box, and you can help make sure that we have lots of pollinators out this spring to help with that. Next thing I'd like to bring up is the NACO Achievement Awards. I know, Mary, I think we had something we were going to pull up for that at some point?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Clackamas County, we've been a member of the National Association of Counties since 1975, and I have the privilege of serving on the board. And I'm a vice chair of two committees at this point in time. And why is the National Association important to us? It advocates for county priorities at the national level. We have close ties with folks, you know, our legislators there. We actually get together and look at exemplary county policies. We train leaders. New Commissioners that join and become active actually get top-notch leadership training. And we all share ideas about how we're going to be optimizing county and taxpayer resources. And it also is very important for us to educate the public about what counties do. When I am asked, I often say we do everything. There isn't one part of public policy, from healthcare to roads, to business and community services, to permitting, to code enforcement, that we don't have a finger in that, in that pie. So one of the things I wanted to mention is that over the years, Clackamas County, we've won dozens of awards for the work we do here in this county. And they're judged on innovation, creativity, and effectiveness. So we have been one of the more innovative counties, I believe, not only here, but also in the country. And some of the recent awards are the Family Justice Centers, Unique Service Delivery Program, the River Health Stewardship Initiative, our Citizen Academy, our Veterans Village Transitional Housing Project, and our Senior Loneliness Line. And you see up here, this is a whole list of awards from 2012 up through 2018. There hasn't really been a year where we have not gotten awards for the innovations. So we get to showcase our policies with other counties and other Commissioners across the whole United States of America. And I, I can't say that I can take credit or we can take credit necessarily as Commissioners. It really is our staff. Our staff is the best staff that I've ever worked with in so many ways, and our job is to give them the space and, and the way, you know, give them the space to innovate, and they will do it, and they will make us proud, and they will help citizens not just here in our county, but across, like I said, across the nation. So that's my NACO. Now I'm going to bring up our word of the week. If we can do that, okay, it's coming. It's one of my favorite words. Okay, gubbins. It's a noun. It's from the United Kingdom. Odds and ends, litter or rubbish, a silly person, a small device or gadget. I can't be doing with all these new-fangled electronic gubbins. They confuse me. So I particularly like this word because I've actually heard my daughter use it because she lives in Bristol now, and so. So there's lots of English expressions that I get to enjoy. Okay, Arts and Culture Activities in the County, the Spiral Gallery, First Friday Art with Heart, Friday, February 7th, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Spiral Gallery in Estacada. It's an opening reception for their February art show. It's going to feature great gifts for Valentine's Day, and 10% of the sales will go to the Estacada Food Bank, and we just talked about food security, and light refreshments will be served. New Century Players presents Don't Talk to the Actors, Friday and Saturday, February 7th and 8th, 7:30 p.m. at the Rose Villa Performing Arts Center. The best-laid plans go comically awry when the cast and crew of a Broadway-bound play resort to manipulation, diva-like behavior, and chaotic abandon to get what they want. By Tom Dudzik and directed by Craig Williams. And I guess there is some strong language. For more information, go to clackamasartsalliance.org. And let me remind people that Lakewood Theater is actually doing a play right now, and it's Wait After Dark. So, thank you.
Thank you. I noticed one of the counties was Transylvania County. Yeah.
There is a Transylvania County.
I never knew that. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this week, spent some time continuing my outreach to various Sunday CPOs, including the Sunnyside CPO and also the Webster Road Community Meeting on our project out there on Webster Road for ultimately some housing for, for folks here in Clackamas County. And also attended the Clackamas County Automotive Expansion Event at Clackamas Community College. Once again, seeing really where the taxpayers' dollars are being put to good use for, for training students here in Clackamas County for jobs of the future. I would put on everybody's calendar, you probably have it, but just in case, on February 15th in, at Canby High School, the National Grange and the Oregon State Grange feels important to inform parents about the possibility of their children being involved with drugs. The hands-on display trailer will show possible signs of drug abuse for parents to watch for. People are encouraged to drop by at Canby School for that event. And on February 16th, the Clark's Grange Dinner with the Vets at 4:00 p.m. Clark's Grange prepares dinner for veterans at the Veterans Village, and we are welcome to attend if we wish to do so. And on that note, I will go to the dog. There are a lot of cute things out there with polka dots, but none as cute as Polka, the dog. She's a lovely young lady that is searching for the perfect forever home. Polka can be an energetic girl, and she's looking for a home that will have a secure place for her to exercise. Polka is looking for a family who will love her and be excited about the future possibilities with her. Training courses would help her bond with her new people, learn new skills, and improve on those that she already has. She can't wait to go on nice walks around the neighborhood or drives through the countryside with her new family. That does sound amazing, doesn't it? Maybe that new family is you. For more information about Polka or any other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Paul?
Just wanted to just kind of, I shared a little bit on Tuesday, but I just thought I would share with, with you all again today, and maybe as you go into the strategy session after this, consider maybe a suggestion, that being that we take a more updated position on the tolling stuff that's before us. So what, Monday night, I attended, represented the county in my role on the Region 1 Act. And what was scheduled to be discussed there was ODOT's tolling measure. That is, right now, focusing on tolling Interstate 5, parts of Interstate 5, and a part of Interstate 205 in the, between Westland, Stafford, and Oregon City. And previously, when we, when I sat on the committee, the tolling committee back then, we had a letter in a position, and I'm always honored to represent the Commission and always do my best to make sure that whatever position I represent at these tables on transportation, that it's a position of the board. And so what's happened since then is that, well, I'm going to back up. ODOT feels as though, ODOT's position on this is that they were, they feel it was a mandate and direction from the Legislature, so they don't have any choice. It's not as though we can call up ODOT and say, "I don't like it, don't do it." They are fulfilling a mandate from the Legislature. So if we're going to influence anything, we've got to make sure our efforts are directed towards the decision-makers, in this case, the Legislature. However, that said, there's been a change because out of HB 2017, where that direction is contained, also in there is some funding to build the Rose Quarter, port, part of that, and fix the bottleneck on the Rose Quarter, and there's funding for that. What's just happened, if it's those who've read the paper, is that Portland has pushed back for a variety of reasons, some special interest, interest groups concerned about air quality and so forth around that, and, you know, takings of land and miscellaneous, and is it the right thing to do, and all those other arguments. But out of that is developed, is this concept that maybe what Portland would really like is having part of I-5 covered for wider sidewalks and wider, widening the bridges, so to speak. And then that decision, or that concept led into, what if you just put a cover over I-5 and built basically a park and all these other things, which led to, maybe it ought to be bigger, and maybe it ought to have buildings on top of it, and, you know, and then those buildings could be like maybe a story or two, and then that grew. And so now, we said, well, let's think even bigger, and that even led to maybe six-story buildings. Well, the cost to put a cover over Interstate 5 for any portion that would support safely and soundly a six-story building and all the other amenities I previously mentioned is pretty darn high. And of course, it's still being developed, and, and that could even grow. But when I asked the question Monday evening, what's, what added cost, because that cost to do the Rose Quarter was about 500 million, what's the add to do all these other extra things? other extra things? To some, some degree, luxury and not really related to gas tax, and it was, say, somewhere between 200 and 500 million as currently, as currently looked at, and that they were going to endeavor, you know, greater research into that, which leads to who pays for that? And, and as the situation came back or the discussion came around the table, everyone got an opportunity to speak about that, and my last to speak, I raised the issue, well, geez, you know, at that part of Interstate 5 in Portland, they've got every transportation amenity alternative available, known, virtually. They've got the tram nearby, they've got streetcar, they have light rail, they got bus service, they got sidewalks, bike lanes, dedicated pedestrian bridges, they've got a slew of amenities and alternatives for people to drive. However, on Interstate 5, we don't have any. All there is is a road. We have seven mile, the seven mile stretch being considered for tolling or for the improvement of the bottleneck, has nothing, has no sidewalk amenities, has no bike pad, has no transit, doesn't have any of that. And so, how are we going to level the playing field? And, and again, if, if building this Rose Quarter project ends up resulting in dollars that would otherwise be spent maybe in Clackamas County or in Washington County, I think it's time to really update our position on the tolling and also the cost, the added cost of amenities such as that. So, when we go into that, and maybe we ought to have a discussion and a position on that. I think we need to get ahead of it as soon as possible, especially the fact that the Legislature's in session, and there's a bill in the Legislature that I believe one of our state representatives has on funding of 205, but I think we need to talk about that. I do know that the Chair and Vice Chair on the right and left of me are going to be meeting in the strategy session, are also on the special ops, but all I'm saying is that, is that we shouldn't be taking the direction of the Legislature in HB 2017 and extending it beyond that, and if they're going to extend it beyond that, then the unfunded portion of I-205 should be part of that equation first, along with other things like the sunrise and everything else, but I won't get into the long details about, about all the shortcomings, but I don't think that the taxpayers of Clackamas County should be subsidizing other amenities when we don't even have our own, or a fraction of what, what the others have, so, just seems unfair, but I'll stop there for today.
All right. Now, I forget what I was going to talk about. Well, I want to thank the folks who showed up today from the search and rescue for the work they do and for providing us information and clarifying some information. With that, I think I'm going to call it good. We have other meetings to go to, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.